Some some discussion with it too, because Leslie has to leave early.
Reasonable. That wouldn't require a motion. We can just agree to do that. Okay, that sounds great. So we'll move a new item B. The old B can be C, the old C can be D. And so B is like discussion possibility of researching what other similar locales have done with respect to some matters of recent concern. Agreed?
Okay.
Okay, terrific.
Thank you.
Thank you. So then our next item here is just approval of the minutes from the February twenty seventh meeting. I was not in attendance, as you know, so I can't comment on them. But what did you all think?
Excellent, as always.
Any corrections? There's no discussion. I would entertain a motion about approval of the minutes.
Yeah, I moved to accept the minutes as presented.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we're going to open the floor for citizen comments on matters not on the agenda. For those in the audience, this is simply a time, if anyone wishes to come forward and speak about matters of concern to them that are relevant to this board, they they may do so. But there are further opportunities for public comment on that are specific to the items that we'll discuss. So I'm opening public comment. Seeing no one coming forward, I am now closing public comment on matters not on the agenda. So we'll move to new business. And our first item, EC COA twenty twenty five oh four, an application by Augustine Santijan Rico for approval of a certificate of appropriateness for new signage for Takaria Jalisco at four fifty three East Nelson Street. TM number thirty dash one dash nine owned by Endora Properties LLC. Arnie, do we have a staff report?
Yes, and good evening, everyone. The Takaria has already been approved for a wall sign and window signage, as I recall, and now they're coming back to you for two vinyl sign panels that get placed on either side of the multi-tenant sign that's up front closer to East Nelson Street. And those sign panels are seventy eight inches by fifteen inches. They're vinyl, and then they'll have a vinyl overlay put on to them. You know, on the second page of your staff report, you do see a photograph of the front of the building with the window sign as well as the wall sign above. And then this lower photograph is the panel or the multi-tenant sign, or they would like to put one of these vinyl panels on one side and then the one on the other. We did include on page nine of your overall packet, the signage requirements or guidelines that are in your entrance corridor. Because again, this is an entrance corridor certificate of appropriateness. So those three items there at the bottom of page nine are your criteria for signage in an entrance corridor application. Staff does find that the proposed improvements meet the zoning criteria. If you flip over to page thirteen, you will see the artwork that was proposed for this particular panel sign or signs, I should say. Have to answering questions. Oh, we do, by the way, have the other application from when the wall sign and the window sign came for, in case that's necessary for your decision.
Anyone have any questions for Arnie? So we don't have an applicant statement. And hearing no questions for Arnie, I'm going to move on to the next step, which is just are there any? Is there any public comment? Anyone in the public like to speak on this matter before us? I'm closing public comment. And we're moving now to commission discussion and decision. What are your thoughts?
I thought the sign, the wall sign looked good. I was a little concerned at first that it was kind of orangey and most of the others had red. But then I looked at the advanced or the auto parts store, and actually their whole background is orange. And then they have some red accents. So it actually, once you look at the whole thing, other than just the adjacent stores, I looked. I thought the color scheme worked well.
So there are no concerns about sort of aesthetic consistency with what's there? Clearly, the dimensional
Was 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 the one above above the restaurant, that was not, that was not supposed to be bordered then to me that it it looks like it might benefit from trim around it. But I mean, I guess that's water under the bridge at this point.
Just quickly, I don't see a border on the artwork that they put.
No, I'm I'm talking, I'm back to this, Arnie, the over the over the actual restaurant.
Right, this is the older application.
Oh, okay.
The first page I just flipped over and it doesn't seem to have a border
Okay.
on the artwork for that wall sign.
Yep. Oh, well.
I'm not hearing any concerns about the proposal, right? And so I would entertain a motion if I'm not misreading that. Does anyone have a motion to make about this?
I move we approve application for EC COA two zero two five dash zero four for new signage on four five three East Nelson Street, proposed by the applicant.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion carries. It's approved. So we'll move to our next newly added agenda item, which is the proposal to we're going to discuss the possibility of perhaps some research being done about similar cases to Lexington with respect to issues that have been recently raised. So do you want to speak to us a bit more about your idea there?
Well, it seems as though we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Other towns, I'm sure, have dealt with this before and to maintain the many unique qualities of Lexington, I think it just would be wise to look and see how other towns in the Carolinas, in Tennessee, New Jersey, I mean, other towns have been have perhaps had a similar situation before where empty spaces in the downtown are being leased to a university or to another institution, whether that would be a hospital or something like that, where it takes it out of the opportunity for the locals and for visitors to enjoy. So. And I I'm hoping that the staff might have time to look at that.
And and you're referring specifically to trying to protect the retail storefronts, correct? Or are you talking? Would you be covering all of the downtown buildings, like the basements, the backs and everything?
I think I think it bears looking to see if 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 some towns, for example, maybe have put a cap on the number of offices that they allow downtown. I mean, it doesn't have to just be in regards to a certain tenant. Maybe maybe there's a way to limit the number of of offices or the way there's a way to limit the number of five and dime stores or or, you know, I've just or or dentist offices.
Bake shops or anything like that, right? Exactly. Like, there could be too many, or you could have a whole downtown of only offices or right. Bake shops.
There's a there's a way to to sort of
Provide guidance for that.
Right, right. And I think it's in the interest of our of our of our local residents who who and also for people that come to to visit. I mean, maybe there maybe there's a way to even limit the number of hotel rooms in in the in right there in the historic district. I don't know, but I think it would be it would be interesting to to see.
I guess first it assumes there's a problem. And I'm not sure that we all agree that we do have a problem because we right now our zoning, we can handle those issues. And so for it for institutions, for example, we've chosen to go through the CUP route so that we could look at it on a case by case basis. And then I understand your concern. I think I think your main concern is, and then correct me if I'm wrong, is that you want to keep the street facing facades, you want to keep them active establishment. So retail, anything that will attract people, commercial businesses that'll attract people, restaurants. And that and I think that is how our zoning has been structured over time is, for instance, we don't allow living on the first floor if it's street facing, because then it makes it an inactive space. But I guess you want to get into more not allowing offices.
Or at least at least maybe limiting them, because then there would be some incentive, and this is another thing. Perhaps there's a way to incentivize having allowing housing and encouraging developers to come in and develop some of those upper floors for housing, which is what we really need.
Yeah, I can. I I agree. We want to develop the upper floors for anything.
Right. But if we incentivize that, I think that's that's worth checking into.
Yeah, I would say we kind of we were, and I speak from Main Street as well. I used to be on the Main Street Board, and that was one of our goals, was to increase housing upstairs. And to tell you the truth, I feel like we've gotten some mixed results. Some of the housings worked out great when you get the larger apartment buildings like Sheridan Row. And I say larger, and that that only, I think, has six rooms or the Lyric has worked out well. But now when we're getting some of these individuals that are living upstairs, they are now wanting to limit what's in the what was formerly a retail space downstairs, saying, well, I don't want that below my house. And so I I for one, I'm sort of second thinking about this push for too much housing downstairs and letting it see how it it plays out in the market, what people are interested in investing their properties in. But I totally agree that we need to keep the frontage properties, that we need to keep those active spaces of some kind, but not all retail. I mean, we can't manage
No.
all retail. So I'm not quite sure what are we considering? Why are we setting boundaries on, say, number of offices versus retail at this point? If we get into a point where we don't have enough retail, I could see trying to work towards that. But I don't think we're there yet. I mean, it seems like we kind of have a good balance. And with the institutional, that's a whole separate issue, because we've been trying to keep them off the retail space. In fact, with the last two buildings we've we've approved, the Rockbridge Building and the Graham Building, that is how the developer is funding these beautiful retail spaces that he's putting in, is that the back part that you don't see, those can be offices, and that's kind of funding the the retail spaces. It's helping it's helping us out overall is how I see it.
Well, it's not allowing unless unless he changes who he is going to entertain as a tenant. Right now, it's it's not open to anybody except for W and L at this point. So that takes it out of other local, the option for other residents of Lexington and Rockbridge County. So.
And are you assuming there's a demand that's being unmet?
Well, there was that one. Was she a psychiatrist?
Yes, yes.
So so she she, for example, asked about that.
I I think I also understand your concern and that what keeps the character, the balance of downtown, the restaurants, the retail. You you want people to have a reason to come spend time in town, other than they just happen to stop in their attorney's office or they're, you know, they're from my house, there's a whole slew of insurance offices, I think, like right in a row, where you go from office to office to office. And and they work eight to five. I think I brought this up in the Adamson meeting. They work eight to five, they leave, and maybe a couple of customers come in, but that's not what's pulling people in to do the shopping or eating and spending money in the downtown area. If you have a whole downtown, let's just say, offices in general or very little retail restaurants, what would there be to? Why would you go there then?
Yeah.
To hang out and
So it seems like there there could be, there could potentially be a way to have a balance. And that's all I'm asking, that we look and see if there's a way to establish that. It's 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 showing that we're doing we're making an effort and I think it bears investigating.
Well, so so I'm here. Yeah, this is interesting. So what I'm hearing from you is a proposal for gathering information.
Right.
But and then I'm I'm I am hearing a formulation of it that sounds as if it's defining the situation here as we have a problem, right? Whereas I think as a body, we could probably agree that there's been a lot of discussion in the community about whether or not we do have a problem with this issue, right? And so I wonder if there isn't a way to be responsive to public in general through gathering information, but in a way that doesn't presume that there's a problem, right? Again, I don't know if this is a good idea or a bad idea, but just brainstorming with you. In other words, if if what you're proposing is that we would identify some other localities that are sort of similar to Lexington in that they're similar size, geographically similar. They also have institutions like ours in some sense. And then just trying to discern, like, first of all, is it an issue there, right? Is it is it is it an issue that public in those spaces is concerned about? And if so, like, how have planning commissions or other bodies responded to that?
And I
Is that is that consistent with what you're?
Yes, that that's that's, I think you've you've hit it on, you've hit the nail on the head there, John, but from a number of people I have heard, you know, some pretty serious disappointment at not not taking what people have come to to the planning commission to 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 share and to express as far as real concern over the 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 taking those those spaces away from the general public, taking those spaces away. And and I I understand what Leslie is saying as far as that's how he's perhaps funding, putting those retail spaces in. But I would argue that you could do that renting, fixing it up, place up for for residences too. I would argue that. I think there's more than one way to 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 solve this, solve the problem. So that's.
I think it's like trying to forward think about what you want to see the downtown remain or even prevent it from becoming something that, you know, we don't want to see or the public doesn't want to see. So in hindsight, you're not like, how did we get here? How did we get all, you know, a string of like where I grew up in in Michigan, there was, you know, they approved cannabis and cannabis was popping up on every corner in the downtown. And then pretty soon in there are several breweries and they really had to provide guidance on, we're not going to have a whole downtown of just breweries and cannabis shops. How do we want our downtown to to operate and feel? And if you don't tackle that, then I guess that can happen. And then in hindsight, you're like, how did we? How did our downtown become like this?
Yeah.
So I mean,
Have something very special here. Lexington is 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 there. There are very few towns like Lexington, but it's definitely worth preserving the uniqueness of it. I mean, we don't want a a fast food joint, you know, every other store either. But and and so some of our, some of our our zoning covers that so that we don't allow that. So I think we have, we have the responsibility to our our residences and we also to our residents. And I think we also, like, like you were saying, Tori, to, you know, be proactive on this. So.
So I guess the thing I'm still seeking clarity about as we continue to discuss this together is precisely what we'd be proposing to do at this step, right? Because I think there's a bunch of issues that are interrelated that are coming up here that are matters of public concern and are certainly worthy of discussion. But if what's concretely being proposed here is some kind of information gathering, I think I'd I'd be curious to sort of delimit what that is and then to see what do city staff think about the feasibility of that? And then to see what the will of the board is about precisely what's being contemplated there. Am I making sense? So are we? So this information gathering that we're talking about, would would it look kind of like what I was describing before, like identify some set of comparable cases?
Yes.
And we would do some kind of due diligence to see do similar issues arise in discussion at planning commission meetings and things like that there?
So you're asking whether it's whether that's our job?
No, no, I'm asking what 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 information you would like to be gathered.
How towns of similar size to Lexington with a similar makeup being whether whether it's a hospital or another major institution or 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 an institution of higher learning, limiting have other towns limited the amount of space that those institutions can occupy in the downtown?
Like, so, okay, so finding similar cases to Lexington in that there's a large institution that sort of carries a lot of weight there and just looking at has have steps been taken in those places to limit their spread across downtowns? And and what have them? What have they been? I mean, I guess I'd like to ask about the feasibility of the research first, and then maybe see is that is this a reasonable way to proceed? What are your thoughts, Arnie?
In the planning profession, there have been a lot of studies, case studies about town gown relationships. It's no surprise.
Town what? I'm sorry.
Town gown.
Yes, yes, I came across that today.
Yeah.
So but those are going to be at a higher level, for the most part, and it's been a while since I've sort of delved into that topic. But so that would be a very a higher level discussion. I don't think that's what I'm hearing. I think I'm hearing specific examples or zoning mechanisms, perhaps, that would address the influx of the gown into town and how we could potentially address that. Now, we can do some, because it's always a little bit clunky when we go off and do the research and bring you back bits and parts. Perhaps if we can find Charlottesville, Blacksburg, or something smaller, perhaps that's more in tune with our size and then provide links to you if you all would then want to delve into it a little bit, and then we have that discussion, or we could go out and maybe grab three as an example and say here, and we provide a quick synopsis, this is the sort of zoning structure on how they handle. And more specifically, because our structure, as an example, is going to be on campus, it's a master plan, it's an overlay institutional overlay district. And that applies to the hospital too, so I shouldn't just be talking about universities. And then and when they come into town, they have to deal with the zoning that is in the downtown proper, which in this case is the C one zoning district. So in our examples, we could sort of just give you a quick overview. This is how they deal with the zoning regulations structurally for the town gown relationships. And then perhaps try to figure out if there are any more specific rules and regulations or zoning mechanisms, such as a maximum number of square footage for any particular type of use. I haven't really seen that. We did, just as an example, I think one of our ADUs said something, you can only have two ADUs per block. One, there was one jurisdiction that we pulled from. So that can, for that new thing, that that's somewhat common. I don't know how, just off the top of my head, if we set a limit on amount of office space, for example, downtown, how we do that, how we keep up with it when things change, the building permits and what's office today, and then it changes to a hairdresser and we don't know about it. So it's a little bit clunky, maybe setting a maximum, but that's just an observation. So perhaps we could go find two or three examples, provide you with a summary or maybe even provide you with links if you want to do more in-depth research. And then we can come back and then hold a discussion.
Guess I'm still kind of lost on, okay, we have the ability as a planning commission just to say, no, institutions cannot be downtown.
Right.
But through our comp plan and and discussions, we've said, no, there there's some benefit to the city to 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 allow it in some places that makes sense. And so to do that, we've gone through the CUP. Just because some people aren't happy with how that turned out doesn't necessarily mean that it's wrong. In fact, council had a work session on that because we were a split vote on the Rockbridge Building to find out, okay, are we not on the same page on this? Once we got into a discussion, everybody was like, for offices, we're okay, as long as, like you said, it's not taking up the, yeah, the active spaces. So we felt like after that discussion, it's like, oh, okay, we seem to be on the same page. We'll see, we'll see next meeting when we have a CUP come up that's on that exact topic. So I'm just not seeing a problem.
Well, being there were last time, I think there were five people that spoke out and and other people have said to me specifically, I don't even go anymore because nobody listens to who comes to present.
I know.
And that's that's really sad. That's really sad.
It is sad, but that's, I mean, that that is kind of a good discussion to have. You know, when we had Kendall, the room was with people on both sides of the issue, and some ended up leaving mad and some were happy. And tell you the truth, I think it all worked out well in the end. But do we listen? I feel like all of us listen. We might not agree, but I think we all listen and consider those points. So I I guess my one concern is I just don't don't see that we have an issue. I think from an academic standpoint, it'd be kind of interesting to see what other places do.
Well, if we don't, if we don't do our homework, we don't, yeah. And if we don't do do some homework, maybe we will, maybe we wouldn't know that that there are ways to to sort of tweak it a little bit. It can still be tweaked a little bit, our our zoning. So.
Another thing just to offer up, you're, we're about to go through a comp plan amendment, and that certainly, at least at that level, if the community through council wants to provide any more direction on what occurs downtown with the institutions. In other words, right now, we had that one land use two point three or whatever that is that talks about new construction and not taking things off the tax rolls. And I can't remember what the third item is in there. But that could be changed to be a little bit more forceful if needed. So there's just to make you aware, there's still an opportunity in the higher level when we go through the comp plan amendment here shortly.
So is that something that's just scheduled, Arnie? Or is this?
Well, it's scheduled, at least through planning commission, as we have later on on our agenda. We're going to go through the chapters, at least, and review what's been accomplished in each of the implementation tables for those chapters. But we have not developed as of yet a formal process for the comp plan amendment.
Okay.
But it is something that we have to do through the state, even though
Right, right.
our state may have said before is rather lax. You have to review it, and there's no state agency that ends up going through what you've reviewed to see if you meet any criteria or not at the state level. So it's a fairly loose set of standards on how we can do that comp plan review.
Okay.
So what do you think, given that? What do you? Where do you? Where does your proposal stand, given what you've heard and then alter into others?
I think it bears a little digging, a little work on our part.
As and are you still proposing that we have a discussion based on some research along the lines that Arnie's suggesting or that we sort of rolled it?
Yes, down.
Like to keep that?
Down, what, maybe in a month or six weeks, maybe?
So I guess the question for others is, would you feel comfortable entertaining a discussion like that if we didn't? You know, there's no presumption there made collectively that we have a problem. It's simply information gathering about tools that other localities have used in addressing challenges.
She's also just trying to acknowledge the public concern of this happening, not necessarily as a problem, but there's obviously public concern about this happening and continuing to happen.
Right, right. Agreed, yeah.
I do have a question, though, maybe Arnie can answer since I'm newer, is when the zoning code was done for the the lower built, the front retail space that we're talking about, the the storefronts at that street level for them not to be used for residential, which I get, was it ever discussed that maybe they shouldn't be used for offices? They should only be for restaurants and retail? Or I mean,
You mean when that was drafted?
Yes. Was that ever like a discussion, like, maybe we don't want all offices at the storefronts?
That was pre me. In other words, in when I came on in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, we did the massive zoning ordinance update, but that was a mechanism that was left over from the previous ordinance. I'm not sure how that came to be necessarily. So I'd have to make some presumptions, but I don't know if there was a talk at that time or discussion that included limiting offices as well. Maybe some of you all can help me, but I know that Main Street Lexington has done a huge service and the DDA, EDA. and the DDA, EDA, uh, the Downtown Development Authority, was that what it was before?
Yeah, LDDA.
Whatever that was. Also, you know, through their, um, efforts that we had fairly shabby downtown, as I understand it, with a lot of offices, because those were just sort of the leftover space with very little retail. So it's just sort of a progression over time. We're very fortunate to be in the situation that we're in. But just know that even as we try to address things, there's, we're sort of along a continuum, hopefully of improvements always and not sort of sliding backwards. I don't know where I was going with that. But, um, there were some point in there that I've now lost, sorry. But.
It was worse. You're saying it, it was worse, perhaps, yeah.
And, and maybe it ebbs and flows is what you're getting at, I guess, as far as offices or restaurants coming in or?
Correct. The offices in particular, it may not have been an issue because there was no demand for anything else. So now we're maybe sliding to a point where maybe it bears a discussion to see if it is. But I'm still a little hesitant. I want to go back with, unless we develop something similar to what we have for residences on the first floor that limits offices on the first floor perhaps. But then second, third floors, basements, I would hope perhaps that we don't maybe go into that level of detail.
Of course, and I.
Want the flexibility for as market changes, as vape shops come and hopefully go, you know, that they can do.
You know, Main Street has had the discussion, particularly with realtors. We've got a lot of real estate offices.
Okay.
And they want their spaces. They feel like it helps them to have that visibility and post pictures of properties for sale where people are constantly walking by and that it matters for their business. And so Main Street was sort of thinking along the same lines you were, not, not on the institutional part, but is, uh, getting more retail space and found that they were going to get big pushback from, from an important part of, you know, sector of our community too. And that, um, we're, we're kind of in a good spot. I mean, we, we can use some new retail spaces, but we, you know, we don't, we definitely need some restaurants. And, and that is part of the problem too, is that there's only so many spaces that are well-suited yet for, for restaurants. But I don't think it's zoning that's going to change any of that. I think it's what the building owners want to do with their property. And I don't think that, uh, what we've done with, with, with these CUPs for Washington Lee and even VMI for using these upper stories as office space, I don't think it impacts this discussion at all as far as what is happening in the ground floor uh, spaces. Now, now going back to your original, if you do have concern about creep, then I, I think we should go the route that Arnie was talking about and have some more discussion in regards to our comp plan and what wording we want in our comp plan first, before we start coming up with, with, uh, ordinances to limit it, because we don't know what our goal is. At least the comp plan will give us guidance on what the issue is. And so that might be a worthwhile discussion to have, set aside time to, on our, uh, comp plan update to see, is to talk about the institutional section. All right.
That sounds, sounds perfect.
So do, does, do I take you then to be persuaded that rather than proposing that we put, where, where are you at on your proposal is what I'm asking, because I hear a few different?
I think both.
Both, you want both.
We kind of need both. We kind of need both. We have to, we have to do our homework.
Okay. And so, and, and so with respect to the proposal at hand, so the, the new idea is that, the new idea that's in some ways the old idea, what we would have done all along in a way, right? Is like when we get to comp plan review, these matters of public concern that have been bubbling up, we discuss them and we're attentive to what's been happening there and we look at the language and, but I think what you're proposing now is that we also maybe in a month's time or so, do something along the lines of what Arnie proposed, where you find a few comparable cases. And I don't think that what we're talking about is that we're considering text to add to our code at that time. We're just looking, we're just doing informational review of like what is in the potential toolkit.
Right.
Right? So that's, in other words, our decision to have that conversation is nothing like consensus on the part of this group that, that there is a problem, but I think it does reflect, if I'm not mistaken, a consensus on this part of this group that we hear that it's a matter of public concern and that we're, we're attentive to that and that we do care about that. And my, my capturing the will of the group with that?
And then if we, it makes, if there's a concern and you do some of the research, she's suggesting maybe at that time, like Leslie's proposing, you say, maybe we want to alter the wording of the comp plan when we look at it.
Yep.
Yeah.
So it's good, it's good to have the information and that's, that's what I would, would hope we could do.
Okay. So I think that's helpful. So do we need a motion or anything to, to put something like that on a future agenda? Or can we just agree to do that together?
I think you can just agree to do that together. I would like to have a pretty clear indication that there's a majority that would like for that to occur, for staff to spend the time to do that and bring it back.
Would you like us to vote on that?
And what exactly are we asking staff to do? Just to send us links to other localities, to their ordinances or their comprehensive plan regarding institutional?
I could just be perhaps put a little bit more clarity to that. So, so for us to find other zoning ordinances in obvious towns with institutions of some sort would be fairly easy. But it does take quite a bit of time to sort of go through what their regulations are and pick them out in different parts of the zoning ordinance and how it applies. And then perhaps to go back and through to see if they have overlays or other, or in, in the comp plan.
Yeah.
So it can be laborious to do that. So it's not a short amount of time. So I'm just wondering out loud if you all want us to do that and then come back with a report of some sort on one, two or three? Or find them and then perhaps share links so that if those of you who are interested or would like to go through that exercise as well, we're happy to do it either way.
My, my one question is, Arnie, um, I feel, well, you, you have, you have the correct, uh, title that if, if you were to call, I'm pulling, I'm pulling a, a town out of, out of the hat. Uh, Annapolis, Maryland, I know it's a bigger town than, than we are, but it has a lot of history like we do. What if you, what if you made a phone call to the, I'm just throwing this out there, to the planning director there and said, do you have situations where you have to limit the, the amount of space that's, uh, going to be used by XYZ? Davidson, South Carolina, or Davidson, North Carolina, another small town. I just, would, would that, would that be an easy, not an easy way to do it, but would that be a, a quicker way to do it than, than having to go all through the information online? I can definitely understand that.
Yeah, perhaps it would. Um, but you still had to, even if we get the sort of the indication, we still have to go back and find the code work to provide it to you. Um, but that can be done. One, a small, um, point I would make is I'm always going to be more comfortable pulling from Virginia because we're a Dillon rural state.
Yeah.
And then because other states just have home rule, I would always be just more willing to find. And we have plenty of, um, university, uh, colleges, universities, institutions in Virginia. So I would just be pulling from those typically more so.
Yeah. Make them as comparable as possible. Yeah. Makes sense. I mean, I don't know if others have thoughts about this. I mean, the question that you're putting to us is how?
In depth.
How in depth? And I, my personal view, I've been trying not to guide this too much because I don't think it's the job of the chair to decide things, but it's the job of the chair to sort of facilitate the discussion, right? But my personal thought on this, I'll say now, it would be something that kind of strikes a balance so that we're not absorbing an enormous amount of staff time on this work. So is there a way where you think you could give us big picture and then access to some links that we could do some research? And then if we in discussion found that there was something we wanted a deeper dive on, that we could revisit that possibility then? Does that sound plausible to you? And is that, would that be agreeable?
I think that's very fair.
I would be willing to research it on my own time and look into it, you know? So it's not taking all of their, their time.
Arnie, do you feel that that would give you sufficient clarity on how to proceed there?
I think so. Okay. We'll find some thing, bring it back to you and then you could all can redirect as well as needed.
Okay.
Perfect.
Wonderful. Uh, do you need a vote from us or anything like that?
We, just generally a consensus perhaps that this is necessary or needed, desired?
I think there's a consensus that.
Yes, please.
Okay. Like to have a conversation.
We'll do. I'm not necessarily going to promise in four weeks or so, but.
Yeah.
We'll have something back as, or at least to get it started.
How about if we agree to find an agenda in the not too distant future that where it fits well, that works with your schedule? That seemed reasonable. Thank you. Okay. Thanks to everyone. And I know you've got to step out. Thank you for being here. Yes. All right. So we're going to move to the new item C, ZOA 202502, annual zoning ordinance amendment, the mini warehouse piece. Do you have a staff report, Arnie?
Yes, but we pulled from the last annual text amendment, and as you know, we go through over the year and put into the red file, the hot file, issues that we have noticed in the zoning ordinance. And the last review that we did, which has been a little while ago with the annual amendment, we set aside quite a number of items. I believe there were 15 into batch A or basket A where we dealt with them all together as one. Cause there were housekeeping items. There were some references that need to be cleaned up. They weren't very in-depth or didn't take a lot of time. Accessory drilling units was put into another basket. Your cottage housing was put into another basket where we just took more time, um, to go through those. So many houses was, many warehouses was one of the items that was brought up, but decided to be put in the basket B for a further discussion at some point in the future, and that's where we are now. Um, and the reason I brought it up because, because we had had two instances of developers seeking property in the city. And I can even mention the properties if needed, where they were thinking about mini warehouses at the time. And for better or worse, my observation is that we have limited land area and is a mini warehouse the best use of that property when we're trying to not always maximize, but better utilize the minimal, uh, limited amount of property that we have. And we had that direction in the comp plan to more fully utilize the properties. And upper floors downtown that we're just talking about is a good example of that. Um, so what I've also provided, sorry, I should go through some of the photographs and just that we printed out and put on your desk this evening to sort of illustrate, you know, mini warehouses and sort of the level of investment, if you will. Um, the first photo, well, the one I'm pulling up, I'm not sure which one you're looking at necessarily, but that's one on US 11 heading north out of town. As you're going up the hill towards Starbucks, it's off on the right. And then the next one that we pulled off of Google Earth, mind you, is in BV. You have a sort of a, um, a contrast between Victorian storefronts and then mini warehouses sort of inserted in between them. And then the last one, just for fun, pulled one out of Charlottesville more recently where it's a multi-story storage facility. So again, it's just an observation that one, we don't have use and design standards for mini warehouses currently. We have a definition and we have them listed in our use matrix that they are a conditional use, which gives us some protections, obviously through the public hearing process in the C2 zoning district. So if anybody wanted to propose them, they have to come through the conditional use permit process. The C2 zoning district is that area out east Nelson Street from Kroger out to, um, Sheetz. And then if we're going out south Maine from the firehouse all the way out to the hotel that's there on the end. That the name escapes me. It's not the Ramada Inn, it's the.
Red? These things?
Nope. Yeah, the bypass. And also the V dot property that's directly behind it. So that's all in the C2 zoning district. That's going out that part of town on South Main Street. So it's just an observation, one, if we're going to allow, to continue to allow mini warehouses in the C2 zoning district as a conditional use, do we actually want to provide some use and design standards? And that's what we put together for your consideration anyway, is that this initial discussion and with all of our zoning text amendments, we provide you with some research and then we provide you with some, um, proposed language to see how would you like, then we go through that proposed language if it's needed. Now, I mean, to whittle it down to the language that you're comfortable with to ultimately advertise for a public hearing. So this is something that we've cobbled together from, I believe, four different jurisdictions in the state. And that's what you have, at least for consideration this evening. And I think that's all I have for our presentation to start. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Arnie at this time?
Well, I mean, I don't, I'm not a huge fan of, uh, item E, accommodations for a live-in manager shall be permitted? So.
Can I go back? Is there, before we get into the nitty gritty, line by line, is there any question or questions about the intent of this or what we're trying to potentially accomplish with even doing this exercise?
What's important?
So I would like to understand, um, when you, when you, um, discussed it, you said there wasn't, wasn't specific guidelines, but that it is allowed in zoning C1 for the ordinance, correct?
C1?
I'm sorry, C2. Um, was there, to your point of the real estate being limited in the city of, like, the city limits? Was there any discussion on how maybe that shouldn't be allowed in the city limits per se?
Yeah, I, I, I remember having long meetings at the planning commission where we're going through the zoning text amendment and particularly going through the use matrix, which was a new mechanism at that time. Because previously we had each zoning district listed out with the number of permitted uses and conditional uses and whatnot. So I cannot recall specifically if the question is, why is mini warehouse even allowed? And why is it allowed in C2 as a conditional use?
Yeah.
I'm not going to have a great answer for you on that. But that's what, that's what we have currently in our ordinance and sorry for not being able to provide better background, um, on that question.
But certainly in our toolkit, the option to simply remove that conditional use even in C2 remains on the table. So one way to address the concern would be with the design standards that we're discussing this evening. But another would be to simply change.
That is an option. Now, we'll say mini warehouse is, storage in general is something that's needed. But is it necessarily needed in an area that has water, sewer?
Right.
Full utilities as opposed to perhaps in a piece of property, a little bit further afield that is only provided with electricity and doesn't have the full slew of utilities.
Right.
So a little question of sort of highest and best use, um, you know, I really hate most of the time when people use that term. But yeah, just for your consideration. And the second part of that perhaps, and sorry, please let me know if there have been other questions. Um, what I had proposed previously, which wasn't well received, was the idea perhaps of only or only allowing multi-story and not allowing that single story warehouse, mini warehouse or self-storage facility, thinking that if you at least had multi-story, that would be a greater investment. Therefore perhaps a more, um, appropriate use or utilization of our property than just a single story. So that's part of the reason for providing you with the photographs of this fairly typical low one-story mini warehouse, self-storage facility versus something that's now newer, well, at least newer to me anyway, has the multi-story facilities that are coming up in, um, more populated areas, like Lexington necessarily.
So not entertaining yet discussion ourselves, but are there any more questions for Arnie about this? No, 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 that's, that wasn't, that wasn't directed at you. Uh, just in, in general, are there any other questions for Arnie at this time? Because we'll, we'll come back to discussion. No? Uh, any, any public comment on this matter? Opened and closed? So now we'll go back to discussion, like, uh, what are our thoughts?
I think the, the multi-story is, is a really nice option if it is, uh, similar height to surrounding buildings. Uh, and how do you, if it, if there's nothing higher than one story next to it, then how do you, how do you come up with that? Or how do you, how do you?
Can I answer that in a roundabout way, but also explain that while doing that, that also provided you after that what was in red on pages 15 and 16, a little bit of background for you. Um, so you wouldn't have to pull out your zoning ordinance, but also what we have in the entrance corridor for rules and regulations about architecture and whatnot. And also beginning on the bottom of page 17, the landscaping, particularly for, um, parking lot landscaping. Just again, as you're going through this, you have to weave this potentially into other rules and regulations that are going to be, um, pertinent to that discussion. But going back to height, just as an example, lots of times we do, we're always concerned about what's immediately around it. But when you have something that's transitioning, you know, to something of, um, more intensity, it's not always perhaps, um, fair when to only look at what's directly beside it. Because then you're never going to be able to meet potential. potential. Maybe that's the wrong word. We also have to look at what's in our zoning ordinance. As an example, in our zoning ordinance, the C two zoning district has a building of height maximum of forty-five feet in height. So I think we were to obviously not allow anything more than forty-five feet in height, but perhaps also not limit height to something to match what's existing around it currently because there is that ability for all of those properties by right to go up to forty-five feet in height currently.
Where's that again, Arnie? I'm sorry. Oh, it's not on there. Okay.
Tables as in section three, so I'm happy to, I've got copies, but.
But is that, is that, what section is that again?
Three.
Three of what?
Sorry, four, four twenty dash four point six. It's our lot requirements table.
Lot requirements table. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I did not think to um, hand that out or include that in the packet. But again, C two zoning district has a maximum height of forty-five feet.
So to make sure I understand, the point that you're making there is that there's already a maximum height
Yeah.
in that zone, so we should bear that in mind. And if we're going to deviate from that with, we can't exceed it, but if we're going to deviate it with a lower one, we'd have to have some good reason to do so, correct?
I'll use an example, correct. I'm using example as houses. If you're in a subdivision that has one-story houses, people think that a two-story house is incompatible with all the one-story houses. But the zoning ordinance allows a thirty-five foot height maximum, which is a three-story house and for most houses. Then you really have to go and at least be aware that there's a thirty-five foot three-story maximum as opposed to just what happens to be there, which is one story for
Yeah.
just the historical pattern.
Right. Good. Yeah, because other stuff's going to keep growing up around it over time. Yeah, good. Thank you.
And the mini storages are only allowed in C two by C U P process only?
Correct. That's why I provided you with the existing language. Didn't go through and read the definition of mini warehouse, but we have that provided. That's in your current zoning ordinance. The use matrix sets us an excerpt. But in mini warehouse is only a conditional use in the C two zoning district and is not allowed in any of the other zoning districts currently.
Well, in terms of discussion, I mean, are we all in agreement that at the very least there should be some design standards put in place?
Yeah.
Respect. I think we all are on the same page about that. And so, you know, one question would be whether we want to take the design standards approach or as has been suggested, just remove the conditional, change the use matrix, right? But perhaps I'm just proposing perhaps a way we could proceed is to work on design standards now since we have these before us that have been prepared by staff. And if we decide that's insufficient, like revisit the question of revisit the question later. However, I don't want to impose that. Does that seem reasonable to you or would you rather entertain?
Well, I wonder also if, if if we need to have more commission members present to for the discussion.
Discussion of any of this or of the changing the use matrix question?
I guess any of it, I'm
Sometimes to make progress, we just have to go ahead.
Okay.
Utilize who's here.
With that.
You're certainly not making any decisions that are binding at this point because this is just the initial read through.
Very, okay.
So I mean, our, our goal at the end of today is to have what again, Arnie, like what are we hoping to?
Perhaps an indication that yes, you would like to continue with the use and design standards, knowing that there's a bigger question looming for perhaps the rest of the commission once we have a more full attendance. So
Yes.
Are we heading in the correct direction with this? What would you like to see different if anything else for research, additional items? Would you like to see only two-story and not one-story? So that's another potential question. Just overall, are we heading in the right direction with the use and design standards that we have drafted here tonight?
That's the outcome we're looking from for this discussion. So that seems quite reasonable. We have a quorum present. We can do that rework. So, good. Well, what do y'all think of the design standard draft you have before you?
There's a lot, there's a lot here and there's a lot of detail. So I think it's very good.
I like the idea of the, like Arnie said, mentioned, perhaps maybe just the two-story option, not the single story option.
I like that as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if, if we went only in the direction, if we only included two stories, that would um, render moot. One thing that I was going to ask about, which is that there are conditions in the multi-story part here that I was wondering if they wouldn't, if we wouldn't want them to apply to to any storage facility regardless of of the number of stories, but.
Well, I'm also looking at the one, um, this picture that Arnie provided, you know, the more, um, the more they sprawl single story, you know, the more land it's, it's taking up in that, that district as well. If you have a two or whatever the maximum height is, at least you're sprawling out.
Get a much greater density.
Exactly. Yeah. If you're going to be building one of those, you bigger.
And I would say not just two-story, I would say multi-story.
Yeah.
Exact.
To or more to up to the design guideline.
Right. Exactly.
So you're thinking up to the height limit of C two.
Well, I like the idea of trying to emulate the, uh, the multi-residential or, um, or office building. I think that's great. And also the, the limiting or the specification of opacity opaque or transparent surfaces is really a good one because I've I came from in Maryland, there are lots of these multi-story storage places popping up all over the place, north of Baltimore City. And they were, I mean, right next to each other. It's incredible how much junk people have and want to store. But, um, but a lot of them were blank façades with just big boxes. Yeah, big boxes, which is not what I think we want. I, I want, I hope we want.
The structure will certainly be different if we only went for or only allowed two or more stories for these so we could come back. But is that a general consensus right now? Um, that I think I've heard two
Yeah.
so far.
I'm, I'm I share that sympathy, you know, I think I'm not hearing the argument for the one-story units.
Is there perhaps a hesitancy moving forward? In other words, we could just go through this as it is and know that there's a preference for two or more stories and then bring that back if there were, if there's a concern about not having more members in attendance? Or would you like to see the next time us go through this and only have the option for two or more?
I mean, I personally don't feel like we need if we, if everyone here agrees that we could do two stories, we have a quorum.
Yes, we do.
And, uh, it, I, I'm hearing no argument. Uh, I'm trying to think of the hypothetical argument for the, you know, and I'm coming up kind of empty there. It seems to me that our purposes are to try to um, reduce the rate at which we might expect such units to be built and then to ensure that when they are, they're built in the most efficient way that's as harmonious with what's around them in the neighborhood as possible, right? And I've already heard good arguments for why two stories would be a good way to do that, the efficiency argument in terms of the use of space and aesthetically, I mean, the pictures that you're providing here, as, as long as there's design standards, for instance, about the bow windows and other things like that that you've mentioned here. Like which of those do you think are most important from a design point of view?
So we're going to just go ahead and focus then on J and with that, um, let's say the first J one as an example, many house, many warehouse storage facility shall be a multi-story structure designed to emulate multifamily or office buildings. There's not a whole lot of detail there, but it at least gives you an indication. And then further down, sorry, I'll have to find it. Internal quarters, loading docks, buildings, buildings.
Number six, buildings shall have massing compatible with the scale and intensity of surrounding developments.
I think we're going to jump over. That one certainly is another indication, but I think what we're looking for is perhaps a little bit more detail. I think that was the question. Um, B on the next page on page sixteen, blank or mirrored building facades are not allowed. I think that's fairly obvious, perhaps. We don't want sort of the mirrored office building look, um, mirrored in this storage facility building. And then C facade should appear to have between thirty and seventy percent transparency. Now that's not specifically defined. So perhaps we need to put a little bit more, um, meat on that in the sense, but the way I would read it for what it's worth is buildings have walls and then they have openings in those walls. So those wall openings are fenestration. If that's a door opening or if it's a window opening, I think that's what they mean by transparency.
Yeah.
So in a solid wall, you have to have between thirty and forty percent fenestration or openings that would lead you to think that it's not a solid building with absolutely no for a light to getting or access getting into the building.
Right.
So that would be my interpretation. Again, if we need to put more onto that, we can certainly do that. And then the next one talks about facade design, streets articulation, articulation is not defined, but articulation shall occur at least every one-third of the length of a building facade. Say you don't have one big mass, you push it back a foot or two foot or six feet and then sort of articulate the building. So it's not just one huge blank wall.
Right.
Um, integrate roof lines. This is the one I'm a little bit more unsure about integrate, sorry, E. Integrate roof lines and articulate prominent rooftops. The tops of flat roof buildings shall be visually articulated with projections providing visual interest and shadow lines. Think that leaves a lot of leeway, the way that's written for the designer. But it also leaves a lot of leeway for you when you are reviewing a conditional use permit. So I'm not sure if there's necessarily needs to be more there, but those are the specifics that are at least included in this draft.
Yeah.
Sort of deal with the aesthetics of a multi-story building.
I think those are all good.
Where, where would you find, um, something more specific than Arnie for, for letter E? Where would you find that? Or you, can you, can you tighten it up?
I think we can provide at least sort of what articulate means for both a D and E. I mean, I think we can. I mean, it's, it's a little bit of a question of are you comfortable enough with it as it is? So that it provides a designer some flexibility, but then also knowing that if they provide flexibility that you don't like, that you have enough support in that language to say no to whatever that they're providing you as a design.
Does it look too loose to you?
This is the first time, uh, we deal with the design guidelines more in the historic district and, um, but we're also in the historic district dealing with smaller buildings where we're not having to articulate things and make things look like other things.
Yeah.
Historic district, you kind of want them to look historic. So this is a little bit of a, a different situation than what we actually deal with with the design guidelines downtown. So I think that was necessarily helpful. Um, so my only observation again is that if you're comfortable with it and it gives you more flexibility, or if you would like us to find something um, similar, but perhaps has a little bit more detail to it, we could certainly do that.
I mean, what I'm hearing you say is that that E is a little bit more open to interpretation, which means flexible. I mean, if you say facade should appear to have between thirty and seventy percent transparency, they either do or they don't. Right? But in the absence of some clear sort of design conception that we have for what the integration of roof lines should be like, I'm not sure that pinning that down with detail is really necessary. And we would have the ability to, this would be a conditional use anyways. It sounds like that's consistent with what you're thinking as well.
Uh, true. And then you also have the support of what's already in the entrance corridor, which isn't terribly detailed, but you do have architecture as an example. Um, so there's some support in other sections of code already. We're okay with that, then generally how about F with, um, some suggestion about primary materials? Going to that detail?
The, the language of shall include but not be limited to is a little odd for me.
True.
May, may include but not limited to perhaps. Um, and high-quality vinyl was a surprise to me. I mean, I'm used to seeing that on flooring, but not as a siding material.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't know high-quality vinyl from regular vinyl. I saw it quite honestly. So I don't know what that means. So that's a good point is do we need more there or not?
Yeah. I mean, I think what we don't want is cinder block and corrugated metal and things like that. And, and I think this language gives us the opportunity to reject the materials.
Well, and they have to go through the C U P process. So there's something concerned it would come up then, right? On materials or anything.
Yeah. And yet give the flexibility to integrate great materials that we can't even imagine.
And then number five gives you the option or gives them the option for high-quality vinyl for providing that justification for why the vinyl that they have is high-quality and for you to believe it or not, you know?
There's new products all the time.
We could, we could, of course, I mean, F would accomplish its purposes just as well if we dropped F five though, right? Because especially with your amendment.
Sure would.
If it just says the primary materials may include, it's kind of like saying these are the kinds of things we'd like to see it. And perhaps including high-quality vinyl just invites like
Yep.
complications. Whereas if somebody brought forward a, a high-quality vinyl material that we liked, maybe, you know, where there's nothing here. If we remove that, we're not prohibiting it. We're just not suggesting it. How does that sound?
Good.
I really like these, um, what you've put together here on all under J.
Me too.
One thing I was thinking about multi-story, uh, units is they require parking lots. Whereas the mini storage, one-story things require access roads primarily. So that's a different thing altogether. But C two, we have parking lot design guidelines or regulations.
We do for the screening and that's what was provided to you, but I think your question is perhaps more about what would the parking requirement be?
Yeah.
I guess, I guess that's what I was saying, you know?
Had not considered that. Let's see what's in, if we even have everything in section twelve that deals with parking. We have a table and hopefully there's something about warehouse or storage. Uh, mini warehouse. Three parking spaces plus one per a hundred units. So you got to have three minimum parking spaces for a mini warehouse facility plus one for each one hundred storage units.
And, and the way those are oriented to the street is also covered.
That is
Language.
Provided in your staff report.
Is it under design standards, Arnie?
Landscaping, which begins on seventeen, but also, oh, there, you're right. There's going to be some already in the entrance corridor. But more specifically, that was added in the update in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Parking lot landscaping on page six, sorry, page eighteen.
Yeah.
Eighteen?
Eighteen.
Yep, there it is. Yep. Parking lot landscaping, but you also have, uh, just parking lots under
Corridor.
Design standards. Yeah.
Sorry, that's why when we add things, then you have to make sure that you reference them correctly and make sure that it all sort of gets woven together appropriately. Oh, sorry. Was that? Was that the answer to the question about number of spaces?
Absolutely. That's
The other thing.
Not surprising that you guys have covered it.
The other thing, um, that I'd struggled with a little bit is some of, some of the proposals or, um, regulations that we had seen did not allow any outdoor storage at all. So it was a mini warehouse and all the storage had to be inside the mini warehouse. Then other ones allowed some outdoor storage, RVs, if RVs are too big to fit in, and you'll see many where mini storage facilities or mini warehouse facilities that have the RVs, the boats and the other things outside. So that was another sort of question ancillary to the overall question in that would you also like to allow some of that? And if you do allow that, how much buffering would you want to occur to hide that from surrounding uses? So not just the parking for the people that are coming and going, but parking spaces that could be let or rented out outdoors for larger items.
I, I vote no.
Yeah.
I know what, I know what that looks like.
It's a, it's a, a, another inefficient use of space.
I agree.
So it sounds like we have a little bit of a task to go back through all of the mini warehouse to focus it on multi-story and to take out some of the ability to store things outside.
Yeah. I mean, I think that seems like we have consensus around the issues just mentioned. Is that, how does that sound to you?
Oh, that sounds good. We can do that. Hopefully have that for you on your next meeting. And again, we're just whittling away until we get a product that you're comfortable with for advertising for a public hearing or an actual ordinance change.
That's fantastic. Everybody good with that?
Yeah. Let me ask you one quick thing here, Arnie. On, on the mini warehouse design standards, where, where is it about, um, prohibiting parking of, or, or, or it would be, where would that be found? Parking of? or, or, or it would be, where would that be found? Parking of, of uh recreational vehicles?
Um.
Do you have that in our, I, I didn't come across it, but I just didn't see it.
Um, in A, the very first item, all storage of four mini warehouse storage facilities shall be within a completely enclosed building, provided however that outdoor accessory storage of motor vehicles, trailers, recreational vehicles.
Okay.
So we could tighten.
We're gonna.
So we could tighten that up so that, one, we're not in like a two-part section where we're dealing with perhaps one-story versus two-story, we only have multi-story and then we'll clean up from what we're hearing to be a little bit more cohesive.
Okay.
Wonderful. Well, that's great. I think we've got that covered now, so we're going to move on to our last item of new business for this evening. Uh, new item D, review of historic resources chapter, the comprehensive plan, Arnie, but I believe you have staff report on this as well.
Um, yes, we were tasked, as we had time um to provide you with, and this is part of the comprehensive plan review. Um, your chair had um desired us to provide you with an implementation strategy tables with additional columns, and those are columns, I think, the intent, and I'm sorry that Shannon's not here tonight, but I think the intent of the columns that were added or that would be added would give you a sort of visual quick update on items that have been either started, finished, ongoing, or had not begun.
Yeah.
So you quickly look at it and see some color or some sort of indication that um, that particular strategy had been, again, started, finished, ongoing, or had not begun. We were perhaps a little lazy in your historic resources chapter. We only added two columns because we thought the other ones perhaps weren't as um useful as initially expected. So if you started it or finished it, you know, finished it, great, but then we also realized there aren't too many of these that are actually something that you finish.
Yeah.
You complete because they're ongoing.
They're, yeah.
Um, so I'm not sure that, or had not begun, so I'm, you I'm not sure you need anything for had not begun because it's just something that we hadn't started. So we condensed it down to ongoing and completed. And that's what we have, at least for this initial review, or playing on doing these as we have time for all of the chapters. And this is the first one in, that's actually listed in the comprehensive plans, the historic resources chapter. So that the best of our ability, we just quickly added two columns, one again is ongoing and the other one's completed, and we just noted in green, thinking that was something that was positive or a go signal. So as an example, the very first one, H R one point one, support the rehabilitation of low-income owner occupied housing for preservation of neighborhood character, and that's ongoing because of the efforts that threshold undertakes for the most part. And the same thing as we go through. Now, I certainly am not um, aware of all the things that go on in the city, and there could be other um of these strategies in the historic resources chapter that could be um put in the ongoing column.
A quick question, so in a, like, H R one dot two, coordinate with other city programs such as affordable housing, housing initiatives to encourage preservation, rehabilitation of historic resources. Neither columns checked. Does that just mean hasn't, hasn't started? Okay.
Yeah, we could certainly put a hasn't started column in to indicate that.
Well, it's, it's fine as is, as long as, yeah, we're just making sure I was interpreting that correctly.
Yeah, yeah, you are, and at least um to my knowledge, that we haven't coordinated with other city programs.
Right. So everybody had a chance to review this in advance of the meeting? Are there, are there uh particular items that anybody, I'm not opening discussion yet, but just are there any particular items on here that you want to ask Arnie about while we're still in the staff report?
Um, isn't, Arnie, isn't there something actually ongoing or, or a grant was, was recently received for uh rehabilitation? That was going to be made.
There is a program that the city is is initialized, so therefore it's not really in here quite yet in the sense that the city manager started a homeowner helper program in a previous jurisdiction. There has been discussion with council, and actually they've set money aside, so maybe that is ongoing. But it hasn't been set up as a program yet, so there has to be a
That's.
Good bit of discussion still on how that happens, but it's likely, I would think, in the next year that we could at least put that into the ongoing column.
We're getting there.
Yep. Right. Well, thank you for that staff report. Again, we have a period for public comment. Um, what we're doing right now is that every, you know, localities have what's called a comprehensive plan, which governs their whole approach to coordinating, how they're going to manage city issues and uh, it falls within the jurisdiction of the planning commission to develop and then to review that, and it's mandated that be reviewed on a regular schedule. And so the manner that we've come up with for this review is what you're watching right now. This is, we're just looking at a particular chapter of it and going over it. If there's any public comment, I'm opening and I'm again closing. Okay, all right. Um, is there any discussion on the part of the commission of what we have here? I'm, I'm, I'm pleased to have it. I enjoyed reading it. Are there things that people see that jump out that feel like we should be doing or that planning commission has a role in stoking? Is there anything else that you think we ought to be considering at this time?
No, but I could just offer up, um, one in the discussion with your chair previously, we sort of committed to doing this, which is fine. But we had sort of said we weren't going to go back and look at the language in each chapter.
Right.
Unless there was something brought up in the discussion about this sort of um uh dashboard, if you will, and then we could go back and discuss. So we haven't prepared anything on the language specific
Right.
The historic resources chapter, other than providing you with this sort of dashboard update.
Which I think is what we need. I mean, this is the procedure that I think we've agreed to follow, is that we look at this and if there's anything that we think requires our diligence, that we would ask for further discussion of that, right? So we're not identifying anything on this list that we think um is in need of further scrutiny at this time.
It's nice to have it in black and white.
Indeed. Yeah, thank you for preparing that. So that brings us to the end of new business. Other business, uh, do we have a zoning and planning report?
We do. The, yeah, sorry. ARB approved exterior improvements for the Grants Building, only bringing that up because you've already seen sort of the CUP for that and that's going to be on council's meeting next Wednesday, next Thursday. Um, and you may have seen the nice article that was in the newspaper yesterday about that. Um, the GIS system that we have, excuse me, um, there's, there will be some changes to that soon. Uh, we hire or contract with the Timmins Group, an engineering company, to provide that as a public-facing um um, mapping system for us. And they, because of Esri, which is there's some licensing and other issues and just their software that they have been using is just a little bit out of date, so they're going to, all their clients are going to be upgraded to a new software. So we, you will see enhanced capability and a slight amendment to the actual visual or interactive portion of our GIS mapping system.
And is that available online through the city website? Okay.
Lexington, GIS dot Timmins dot com.
It's very good.
Yeah, it's really helpful.
Right, it's, it's very intuitive and it's easy to find.
And it's going to, again, excuse me, have a few more capabilities, so you'll be able to search for more things and so it's going to be a little bit of an upgrade for sure, and largely stay the same sort of platform, or at least the visuals largely be the same as what you're used to now. Um, just um for your information, the commissioner and treasurer's offices have already left out of the city hall building. And we are scheduled to leave the city hall building at the end of the month or the first of April. So there are some changes in city hall. Luckily, we meet here, so that really doesn't have much of an impact on you and your meeting um place. Just wanted to mention that.
Wonderful, thank you. Uh, no questions for Arnie? I believe we do not have a city council report.
I asked Leslie, knowing full well that she was going to leave, she said she was going to mention city hall, which I've just covered. And also the Morse Creek Dam, um, again, I think there was an article in the paper, but just very briefly, we have a water source that we really don't have access to, but it was a backup water source. It's in Morse Creek Dam, which is twelve miles-ish that way. And we are having a bit of a sinkhole issue, and when the city council recently held a meeting and they also discussed um spending about, I think it's a hundred seventy thousand for engineering studies out there, so she was just going to mention that briefly.
Thank you. Great. So we just have uh one item left. Should I leave to my colleagues? I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
I second.
Okay, so this meeting is adjourned. I'm going to, I'm going to use the gavel, you know?
Go for it.
There we go.
Was that my, was that my name?